Good evening. This meeting is now called to order, Township Council Meeting, Monday, October 19th, 2020. Will you all rise to the flag and please remain standing for a moment of silence for Philip Simone? Mayor?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, infinite, and just as for all.
Mayor?
Thank you, Council President. I have some words here that I would like to read regarding Philip Simone and his tenure with township and his over forty-year career provided to me by his family. Philip H. Simone has served the township of Little Falls proudly for over forty years. He has to be one of the longest-tenured employees, if not the longest. To put that into perspective, Jimmy Carter was president and gas cost fifty-nine cents a gallon when he started. The Title CS Hells have been superintending public works, sewer system operator, recycling coordinator, clean communities coordinator, office of emergency management coordinator, and shade chairman, among others. He has led through ten major floods, with one of the Passaic River being the second worst of all time. Countless hurricanes and tropical depressions, way too many snowstorms and blizzards, and many other natural and man-made problems. He started his career with windfalls and sewer plant, which has not been around since the late eighties, but the only piece left of it is the road department salt bin. From managing the township sewer system, he moved to managing the town's roads department in the late eighties, where he was influential in many projects and programs during his tenure. He was instrumental in starting the township recycling and clean communities programs, as well as building a recycling center where there were just an infancy around the state. He oversaw the construction of every township building in use today, from the motorhomes, garage, and sewer pump stations, the recreation center, the municipal building, and then its addition of the police station and renovation of the civic center, from a closed office to a new community center. He has been part of or overseen the development, redevelopment of the township's park system from Amity, Lewis Street, Railroad, Inwood, and Patterson Ave. to the Marsh Canal Greenways and Royal Road Memorial Park. He was a fountain of knowledge because of his years of service as a resident, contractor, elected official, or township employee within the road department or another department head of work. Nine times out of ten, he was able to provide you with the right information, and if he could not, he would always point you in the right direction. His standard for quality of work was second to none, and he expected nothing less from the men working for him or contractors doing the work for the township. He lived in Little Falls, worked in Little Falls, raised a family in Little Falls, and he took all of this and that he took pride in Little Falls, and what it's done in Little Falls was his town. So much of what the road department does is behind the scenes, and people don't really get to see much of it. But that is the way it should be. When you are able to get up in the morning and brush your teeth and take a shower, or get in your car and drive your kids to school, or make up the morning after a large snowstorm, and there's stranger cleaner than when you went to bed, there is a reason why one is making sure all these things are taken care of. And for the past thirty years, that man has been Philip H. Simone. His knowledge, expertise, and determination will all be missed, but the man will not be, and his memory and legacy not forgotten. On a personal note, Phil always picked up the phone when I called. He always pointed me in the right direction. And frankly, he always knew the answer without having to even point me in the right direction because he was an absolute wealth of knowledge, having everything to do with Little Falls. And he will certainly be missed here by not only us within the government here in Little Falls, but by the residents of Little Falls because he was truly a dedicated man. And as dedicated as he was to this township for forty years, he was even more dedicated to his family and home, and he will certainly be missed. And our thoughts and prayers are with Phil's family.
Thank you, Mayor. Mrs. Kraus, please make sure that statement is put into the permanent record.
Yes.
Mrs. Kraus, read the statement of public notice at this time.
Take notice, a adequate notice of this meeting has been provided in accordance with NEF Bay at eight, NEF Bay at ten, as follows. The notice of the meeting is currently posted on the bulletin board at the municipal building located at two twenty-five Main Street, Little Falls, New Jersey, on January nine, 2020. The copy of the notice was meant to be attached to North Jersey Health and Insurance on the same date. Additionally, copies of the notice are filed in the public address on said date. This meeting is being conducted under the circumstances of the COVID nineteen health situation. No public will be allowed to interfere in person. A YouTube link to this meeting can be accessed on the township website at www.jay.com. Electronic provisions have been established for the public to participate in the public conference of the meeting.
Mrs. Kraus, at this time, please call to roll.
Councilmember Havlet?
Present.
Councilmember Kawati?
Present.
Councilmember Seaver?
Present.
Councilmember Van Cherry?
Present.
Council President Stone?
Present. Have a motion to approve the minutes for the meeting of September twenty-first. Moved by Councilmember Van Cherry, seconded by Councilmember Kawati. Mrs. Kraus, please call to roll for the minutes.
Councilmember Havlet?
Yes.
Councilmember Kawati?
Yes.
Councilmember Seaver?
Yes.
Councilmember Van Cherry?
Yes.
Yes. Councilmember Kawati?
Thank you, Council President. On Thursday night, I attended the fifteen-week long GP domestic violence awareness program that was put on by the Domestic Violence Prevention Committee, and I just want to let the record show and let the members of the committee know how proud I am of attending the event. We had some terrific speakers, we had the involvement of the entire community, we had attendance by the entire mayor and council, and I appreciate your support for this issue as well. And it was just a really terrific night, dedicated toward spotlighting the issue of domestic violence, particularly this year with the COVID situation with people being stuck in their homes more than usual. So I want to thank everyone involved for the work that they did spotlighting this issue. Regarding Halloween, I know that in the past we discussed the idea of having a Halloween event at St. Louis Park last year, and we planned it, and it got made out, but this year, with what's going on with COVID, with some upticks in the numbers, a little mucky in the numbers there, we've decided to do this issue event on hold. And so I know that I mentioned that we were hoping to have something, but the decision has been made that that probably is not the best course to take. So let's look forward to Halloween twenty twenty-one, a big celebration, Halloween at Wilmore Road, at the park in Wilmore Road. And lastly, I just want to say, I'm just coaching at the rest center and training my coaches at the rest center after school, and I couldn't be more proud of what's going on there. The turf looks great, and the pickleball area is terrific. And I encourage everyone that hasn't already been down there, they should go down, check out, ask somebody to just knock shots, enjoy it, look forward again if you're participating, and just enjoy what's been done. And that's it for me.
Thank you, Councilmember Kawati, for putting on quite a moving program that was put on for the residents and the speakers. Of course, I think the mayor will concur along with the councilmembers that some of the toughest calls for law enforcement is when they do get a domestic violence call. That is quite a challenging moment for our officers to deal with. And also, I think, you know, Councilmember, domestic violence is just not about the violence of physical violence, it's also religious and economic, if you want to speak a little bit about that, because I think that gets undershadowed a lot, and domestic violence is just looked at as a physical violence.
Absolutely. And one of our speakers, there will be a video of one of our speakers being released soon with M and S three percent, and she spoke at length about several different sites of what qualifies as domestic violence, and it's being, you know, psychological, and economic, and emotional, and physical. There are many different forms of violence that can come around, and you need to be aware of all of them to be vigilant in helping those that we think may be victimized, because the big part of getting people help is letting them know that they're not alone, and that there's help out there for them, that's sort of what the vigilance is about. And so if anyone needs to reach out to someone, the number of the State County Women's Shelter is nine seven three eight one eight four five zero. I would encourage those of you that know, and it's also posted on our website.
Thank you. Councilmember Havlet, are you prepared to give your report at this time?
Yes, I am. I'm happy to say that I was able to sit in on the library board meetings and found out some great information. I wanted to let everyone know that the library at Farmer's Market this Sunday, yes, the library is currently accepting book donations until the end of October for the Friends of the Library sale. However, no date for the sale has been determined at this time. And the library is also going to be sponsoring the first annual conference tree. Conference tree is going to be on Saturday, October 1st, Halloween, Halloween twelfth two. All you need to do is to pull up to the curb side, the barn, and they will bring out the children. It is possible that the children will be in costume. As far as the farmer's market, let everyone know that we are extending the market until November 1st. Also, that human path, that we are out at Farmer's, we'll be back this Sunday with the alpaca. The alpaca will be there to wear the carefully cut, an outlet, citrus wood, and the market on the market, under the whole, some produce, pumpkin, soups, and definitely more, so we're still very strong for another two weeks. That's the last report.
Thank you. Yes, the market seems to be doing quite well, seems all the vendors are happy, and it's a great, it's a great feeling for all the residents, too. They quite enjoy going and be able to pick up some produce on the fly, so great work. Councilmember Van Cherry?
Thanks, Council President. Mayor, taking a few minutes to remember, remember, you know, for some really nice words, our thoughts and prayers to Phil's family. He was stable in town in twenty twenty. Great resident. To various things. In terms of my, we've got a few different things to touch on. I had a poll today with Mr. Oneville, and good news about a project that I've been working on that, you know, we've been, a little, trying to get this finalized in terms of the four-way stop signs we had met a couple of residents who were on Van Tell, and Jacobin, stemming from those meetings, and the residents, our plan was to bring forth ordinances and to Van Tell, and we've made that four-way stop sign, and do the same thing for Jacobin and Morning Side Circle, based on my comments today, to company President Scoban, it looks like we can move ahead with you, Mr. Oneville, Mr. Kraus, to get these through, or through future council agendas, so that we can get these passes signed, placed for the people forward. So, of course, appreciate the patience and making sure of all your help. On top of that, I'm working on, and also Mr. Oneville, posted, transportation issues had a chance, and also with the help of Purple McPaddo, just to look around town, if our county was missing, potentially look at some stop signs that may need to have a number two, so pulling the list together, and that I'm hoping to work with Mr. Oneville to see which ones we can go ahead with, because, you know, there's some areas that are scattered where, you know, there is a stop, knowing that there's a lot more foot traffic right after the COVID, you want to make sure that, make sure it's safe, secure on our road. That's something I'm hoping to bring more to the front in the next month or so, but just know that, you know, stage one, stop one, four-way stop sign, see what else we can do to really slow down some of the, keep it safe and have as much as we could. One thing, too, I want to say, PDW Department, recently President Little Ramona Drive, Walter Jackson, had reached out about seeing if we could put up some signs that don't children at play, and with the help of PDW, and working with some residents to get permission, permission signs in front of some of the houses, we were able to address that last week, and children at play signs were placed. And, you know, I encourage residents to do anything, you're looking for, have questions, you know, please reach out, so we're happy to look into whether it is a sign, or some other questions you have around, so we're happy to do that. And lastly, as Councilmember Kawati mentioned earlier, about the fields right now at the rec complex, I have to say, it's been a creep to see the ones that's playing on the curb and the toes, it's in the program that are getting to be enjoyed as well. Ironically, over the number of soccer coaches that text each other when it rains outside, we all said the same thing. If we had the grass like we turned it before the construction, we probably have been bringing down through Tuesday, whereas with the curb now, after ten minutes of stopping rain, it rains very well, and you can actually go on the field. So it is great to see and to watch, to acknowledge, while it's a pay, while it's a benefit, so it's an exciting time, so if you're going to continue to work with sports, with sports involved, but also this brings baseball, golf, baseball, their activities. That's it for me.
Thank you, and thank you for the hard work you put into the Transportation Committee to protect our residents, and you, as well as Councilman, Councilmember Kawati, are both soccer coaches, correct?
Yes.
So the results of your players playing on the field, the feedback was, I would gather, very positive?
Yes, I coach water distance experience for hundreds, and the girls, you know, they enjoy it because they go jump around, go with the rain, you know, in the mud, most of the time playing defense, trying to kick the ball, whereas now, it's like, wow, it feels so nice, faster to move the ball. Yeah, I can tell you from, you know, my team standpoint, they're very happy, and now when they go to other towns, the first thing they say is, "Our team is better." Good to hear that.
Councilman Kawati, I gather your feedback is the same?
Absolutely. My boys, we want them in, we're five and O, and so we're happy about that, and, I mean, they're out there every day, they're out there after practice, now these are things that never were possible on the grass field, because it would have been ruined for the league. And so now, you know, that field's not just getting used by the, if the league, if it's possibly, it's also being used by, it's recreational, recreational, and the field would have just been completely unused almost half when we had the grass. So this has been a special tremendous upgrade to our community.
Councilmember Seaver?
Yes, thank you. So just wanted to give an update on the municipal line. We actually just latched up our door decorating contest for this fall. We had two different types of contests. We had the fall harvest decorating contest, as well as the cookie contest. So residents were able to register their home for just a gift, ten dollars, and be judged and win in one of those categories. We had six total gift cards from ShopRite, uh, one hundred dollars each, so we were able to award one hundred dollars to the top three in the harvest festival theme door decorating contest, and another three one hundred dollar gift cards to the cookie right door decorating contest. So congratulations, we did announce the winners today, and it was great to see the number of little balls come out and really kind of get into the spirit. So also, this past Saturday, kind of coupled with the new turf field, we have our new racket area that we just completed, and we did have our pickleball ribbon cutting, if anybody remembers, that's been probably talking about this for about two years, and it is now officially complete, so could not be happier. We did resurface all the tennis courts, we did demolish the shed, and put in two new pickleball courts, which have today have been extremely busy, and have, it's been great to see residents and surrounding residents of neighboring towns of all ages are taking this great activity. Our pickleball area also has lights, which a lot of surrounding areas do not, so something that's really great. We also included a walking path that was not in existence before, so you can now safely get from the parking lot to the pickleball court area, to the tennis court area. And then in that, we'll also be having a water fountain going, and then we do have two-shaped structures, so you can sit, relax, wash, or also just wait for courts to open up. And then, you know, there's always some upgrades that aren't so shiny or sparkly to talk about, but it is really important, we also added drainage to that parking lot next to the court, if anybody's ever used that small lot before. When it rains, almost half the lot is not usable for seven days because it is not, it doesn't drain, you actually have to wait for it to evaporate, so now with that, with the drainage, that lot can now be used immediately regardless of weather. So really a great area, a huge upgrade, and really ties that entire sports complex together and continuing to serve our residents of all ages for this community. Really been happy and proud to help see that first. That is it for me.
Thank you for that in-depth report. Yeah, what a wonderful program that Pam Canataro and Ms. Lines put on with the door decorations for Halloween. Hopefully that could be expanded next year, and then I hope every council member puts out ten dollars and participates in that program next year. And that would really tie in well with our, I guess, push or trying to expand our Halloween program here in town on First, Second, and Third Ave, where quite a few trick-or-treaters come. So that was really quite an exciting program, and I concur, it was really well done. As far as the pickleball court, I think there were some of us, I would say me, who didn't think it was probably going to work as well as it worked, so I'm happy it's working really well. I did see the mayor play in People Twice His Age, was giving him a run for his money, so it is very well liked, and it's great to exercise, and it was, it really came out nice, so congratulations to the mayor and all the council members who put a lot of time into making that happen. I had the great privilege of this sun, this past Sunday, along with Councilmember Havlet, who attended with the Girl Scouts, who, if I'm not mistaken, Councilmember, you were down at Lewis Park, Lewis Street, at the park there. I was privileged to, about, I would say, a good twenty, twenty-five Girl Scouts went down to the Morris Canal all the way to the Passaic River, picking up litter, and they did a really wonderful job. They went right up to the banks of the Passaic River, picking up litter. We have a little issue down there, which we're going to correct through the mayor's office. There are quite a few fisher beds, no, I didn't see any fisher women, fishermen fishing, and unfortunately, there was some litter that they were disposing of, so we're going to correct that problem, as long as, as well as a photographer there, it's quite nice. So thank you to the Girl Scouts. I don't know if Councilmember Havlet's want to add anything to that, I know you were with them at Lewis Street, correct?
Yes, I was at Lewis Street, and I was happy to say that the Girl Scouts were so enthused about the cleanup, but I will say, giving some proper kudos to our PDW that Lewis Street Park was very, very clean, but the girls just still had fun cleaning up whatever was there. And then I got to play a round of Gaga Ball with them, which is really fun, the Girl Scouts built a Gaga pit at Lewis Street Park, it's a variation of dodgeball, it's easier dodgeball, done with your hands, compared to your feet, just kind of hitting below the knee, it was really fun playing with the little girls, the daisies, the brownies, and I think there were some juniors that were there, helping with the cleanup and the Gaga, so it was really great.
Council President, I think I just heard that while you were busy cleaning up our parks, Councilwoman Havlet was busy playing Gaga Ball with the Girl Scouts.
You heard correctly, let the record show that. Absolutely, let the record show that, because that's...
I agree with that.
Thank you, Mayor. But for those of you who know, litter is one of my, every council member has what I would call their pet peeve, or something that they're really into, as you heard Councilmember Van Cherry talk about transportation, Councilmember Seaver talk about the pickleball, the food market, Councilmember Havlet, and Councilmember Kawati talking about really what they're passionate about. You know, my passion, what I can't stand is litter. Those that know me, sometimes on a Sunday morning, I'll wake up early and I just got to go out and pick up litter. We should not have any litter in town, and we're working forward, through the mayor's office, that in 2021, expanding the Clean Communities Act, that we have monies in a grant to continue to clean up the parks, as you heard from Councilmember Havlet, that the park was very clean, so I'm happy to hear that. Mayor Beaufort, Damián, or the floor is yours?
Thank you, Council President. The first thing I would like to address is a little bit about your information TSA to all of the residents of Little Falls about voting in the 2020 election this year. What everybody needs to realize, and what's very important, is that this year, and we will be known, and I put in quotes, in-person voting. Now that said, I have, everyone should have by now received a vote-by-mail ballot delivered to their home. If you have received it, I encourage you to complete it, put it in the envelope, place it on the road, place it on the instructions, and return it, either through the United States Postal Service if you wish, or you can use the drop box, drop boxes that are located in Allen Municipal, throughout the county. We have one here at our Little Falls Municipal Building, between the entrance to the municipal building and the police station, it's a little bit closer to the police station, it is under twenty-four-seven surveillance by monitor by the police there. That box is every single day, by an officer from the prosecutor's office, an officer from the sheriff's department, and several individuals are monitoring the removal of those ballots. And they transport them down to the county, where they are inputted into the system, once they can begin being opened. You can check on the status of your ballot, and I will make sure I get this information up on our website, through email blast, about how you can check to make sure that your ballot has in fact been returned. So you can do that, to make sure that they have in fact received it at the county. Now, the reason I say, I put in quotes, there is no in-person voting this year, is because I've gotten dozens of concerned residents reaching out to me, indicating that they have not received a ballot, that their spouse has, or maybe the entire house has not received a ballot. And things of similar importance are indicating, you know, indicating, I don't know how they're going to vote. This year, on election, you are permitted to vote through St. Valley High School to vote now. The reason I said in-person votes, and I sit here to vote in-person at the St. Valley High School, because on election day, you will not be permitted to enter a physical polling booth, like you haven't the pass to press the buttons, unless you will certify that you have a disability that renders you completely unable to complete a vote-by-mail ballot. Now, you will be permitted on election day, if you show up, vote in person, at St. Valley High School, to complete a provisional ballot. There's a lot of misconceptions regarding ballots, one of the main things, they don't get counted. All provisional ballots will be counted. But, they will not be counted until, all vote-by-mail ballots are opened, registered, and recorded. Once they do that, then they will go on to the provisional ballots. The reason that they do this is because they want to ensure that you have not returned a vote-by-mail ballot by the times that are prescribed, whether to drop them to an election box by election day, or sealed by the county, by postmark prior to that. So, please be aware that if you have not received a ballot, you are permitted to go down to St. Valley High School on election day and have a provisional ballot. There are also, a lot of times, over the next week, that you are going to be permitted to go down to the county and do the same thing down there, and I am going to bring up just the information very quickly, the most convenient for Little Falls residents, with Patterson location, although the long-term location of the parts of the place, well, but I'm going to read the Patterson location information. It is located at four oh one Grand Street in Patterson, where you walk in. On Saturday, October twenty-fourth, you're permitted to go there from nine AM to one PM. Each day, I'm going to read each one of the numbers. On Monday, October twenty-sixth, you can go there from eight thirty AM to four thirty PM. On Tuesday, October twenty-seventh, you can go there from eight thirty AM until eight PM. On Wednesday, October twenty-eightth, you can go there from eight thirty AM to four On Wednesday, October 28th, you can go there from 8:30 a.m. to 4:30 p.m. On Thursday, October 29th, you can go there from 8:30 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. Right after October 30th, 8:30 a.m. to 4:30 p.m. Saturday, October 31st, in case individuals are unable to make it on a weekday, on a weekday during a vote schedule, you are permitted to go on Saturday, October 31st, from 9:00 a.m. until 4:00 p.m. They will also be open on Monday, November 2nd, for the election, from 8:30 a.m. until 4:30 p.m. They are also open on election day, from 6:00 a.m. until 8:00 p.m. when polls close. So you are permitted to go down to the Passaic County Courtrooms and vote in person there. If you do have any question regarding your ballot, if you still have it arrive in the mail, if you somehow inaccurately completed your ballot, request a new one. You can reach the Passaic County Court at 973-881-4127. This information has been sent out via email blast. I will do so again, but please be advised that you do have an opportunity to vote. Even if you have not received your vote-by-mail ballot, whether it's lost in the mail or what have you. There are options to vote. So please, everybody make sure you vote again. This is not a plea. This is simply a plea to make sure that you get out there and vote. It is your right, and frankly, it is your duty to make sure that you vote. Get out there and vote. Votes must be in by 8:00 p.m. on election day. So, that is the process that everybody should be prepared to vote through this year. I will tell you, if you for some reason think that you will be able to show up to the court on election day in a regular sense, in a booth, you are mistaken this year. Again, I understand your disability that renders you unable to complete a vote-by-mail or provisional ballot. So, please, the ballot that you receive at your house, if you receive one, is a real ballot. Complete it and return it. Next, I want to congratulate our local school president, Nancy Marinelli. She has received countless awards since being made the Little Falls Superintendent of Schools. She has received the North Devon Award for School Three, a White House District for the Township. And most recently, she was made the St. Valley, I'm sorry, yes, the St. County and North Jersey Superintendent of the Year. And I want to wish her huge congratulations on all of those, on the recent activity of the event that was held at the Woodson School, one of the board meetings. Although she was acknowledged for all the incredible achievements that she has, so rightfully earned over these past couple of years, and most recently with the St. County and North Jersey Superintendent of the Year. And finally, before I close today, I have a couple of proclamations. Some of these were intended to be read at the first October meeting, but unfortunately, we had some technical difficulties. And we still have some to vote for, with legal issues that residents may be experiencing at home. I'll be sure to try to work on that before the next meeting. But I have three proclamations. One for breast cancer awareness. As many know, the birth of October puts a lot of emphasis on breast cancer awareness. As you're accusing a lot to say, October also brings light to domestic violence awareness. And finally, October is also Down Syndrome Awareness Month. And I have a proclamation for all three of these incredibly important things. First, as far as breast cancer awareness and breast cancer awareness month. Whereas breast cancer is the second most common diagnosed form of cancer for women in the United States and remains the second leading cause of cancer death among American women. And whereas, a lager tray of a breast is recognized as the single most effective method for detecting breast changes long before physical symptoms can be seen or felt. Early detection and improved treatment is believed to have significantly reduced the number of deaths caused by breast cancer. And whereas, researchers, scientists, and numerous nonprofit organizations are dedicated to discovering the cure for breast cancer. By the month of October, we acknowledge the extraordinary commitment and effort invested in this cause. And whereas, we recognize that over 25 million Americans are breast cancer survivors that give us hope for the better future. Now therefore, with the support of those who continue to profligate breast cancer, I, James Beaufort Damianno, Mayor of the Township of Little Falls, on behalf of the township council, extend our deepest respect to survivors and those advocating for prevention and the cure, and we serve doing hereby proclaim October 2020 as Breast Cancer Awareness Month. Again, as I indicated, October is also Domestic Violence Awareness Month, and I want to thank Councilman Kawati for hosting our domestic violence awareness, now even here in Little Falls. And whereas, and just before I begin, I did read this at the vigil that Councilman Kawati hosted here at the steps in the front of our municipal building. And whereas, domestic violence is a serious crime that affects people of all race, age, gender, and income levels. And whereas, domestic violence is widespread and affects over 40 million Americans each year. And whereas, more than three Americans have witnessed an incident of domestic violence. And whereas, children of war and violent homes who believe to be abused and neglected at a rate higher than the national average. And whereas, only a coordinated community effort will put a stop to this heinous crime. And whereas, Domestic Violence Awareness Month provides an excellent opportunity for citizens to learn more about preventing domestic violence and to show support for religious organizations and individuals who provide critical advocacy services and assistance to victims. Now therefore, I, James Beaufort Damianno, Mayor of the Township of Little Falls, proclaim on October 2020 as Domestic Violence Awareness Month, and urge residents of Little Falls to work together to eliminate domestic violence from our community. And finally, our Down Syndrome proclamation. Whereas, people with Down Syndrome makes significant contributions to the fabric of life. They participate in workplace, rural businesses, and starting wage activities, create art, music, and dance, excellence portion recreation, and pursue studies in schools, community colleges, and universities. And whereas, Down Syndrome is not a disability, nor is it an illness. It is a distinct culture within all cultures with its own roots, customs, language, and common bonds. People gifted with an extra 22% transcend borders, socioeconomic, color, and ethnicity, bringing with them a richness that enhances the lives of those they touch. And whereas, World Down Syndrome Day is recognized worldwide as a day to raise awareness, are to celebrate the many accomplishments, contributions, and talents that people with Down Syndrome bring to their community. Now therefore, be it resolved, that I, Mayor James Beaufort Damianno, on behalf of the Little Falls Township Council, do hereby proclaim October 1st, 2020, as World Down Syndrome Awareness Day in the Township of Little Falls.
Thank you, Mayor, for that fine report. At this time, Mr. Kuscha will give the mayor and the council's 2020 Best Practices Report.
Thank you, Council President. Happy to report that the Township of Little Falls has met and surpassed the minimum requirements to maintain our state aid, the minimum scoring this year was 16 points, when we received 23 points in responding to the core competency questions on the best practices inventory, and that all of the core competencies with regard to budgeting, personnel, finance, capital projects, and procurement. Each year, the questions change, considering that the state is looking to determine as it moves forward. There were some questions on shared services, which we also met, and there were several questions with regard to recycling, which we were in compliance with. Several questions with regard to COA, and as you know, we have our substantive certification done as one of the first municipalities in St. County a few years ago. So we're doing very well on the best practices inventory this year, and I'm happy to let you know that.
I'm sorry. Mr. Kuscha, thank you for that report. For the residents, first of all, does the council have any questions concerning the best practices report for Mr. Kuscha? Mr. Kuscha, so this is a program that the state mandates for townships to do, is that correct? Do you want to explain what best practices report?
All municipalities in New Jersey are required to complete the best practices inventory annually. It consists of anywhere from 60 questions to 85 questions. And there are always core competency questions about how you handle your budget, how you do the funding, how you make procurements. Those are the basic questions. And then the other questions deal with whatever happens to be occurring in the state. It's talked about opportunity zones. Sometimes it talks about more about COA. This year was a mix of shared services and planning and zoning, along with shared services and the like.
Thank you. At this time, Councilor Wenzel, do you have anything to report to this governing body?
Nothing at this time, Council President.
I guess we'll be calling on you soon as we get to the noise audience, so don't go away. Let's see. Can I have a motion to open the meeting to the public for all matters? Moved by Councilmember Kawati, second by Councilmember Seaver. All those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed signify by saying nay. Motion carries. Mrs. Kraus?
Anyone wishing to address the township council may dispatch a heading and email to c kraus@lfnj.com. The email must provide any minute address for the record. At this time, we will be attempting a reset, which will allow the public to send comments and questions via email. At the end of the reset, the meeting will reconvene, and all public emails will be read into the record. Council President will determine if a response is needed, and if so, he'll direct that response. Once the process is complete, we will return to the regular order of review.
So at this point, we'll return at 7:51. Thank you.
Okay. We have audio again. Hold on. We have audio again.
All right. Can one of the council members try speaking? Can I test this?
Yes, Al, we hear you.
We just have a delay.
Al, can you talk again?
Al, speak again, please.
Actually, there's still one of those in that.
Please, no, it's not clear.
No, it's not really, it's not really.
Try again, try again. One of those.
I am. So take a listen, take a listen. Coming out, coming out, both sides. The one side of the time.
I don't understand what you mean.
You want me to keep talking? I have a question. I'm trying to look at why you're the speaker. Sorry, I think that if you put both sides, one of the sides of your speaker, if you put them, I'm sorry, if you put them both, both speakers near the microphone. Yeah, your, yeah, the lighting, the lights, the lighting, the lights, the lights, the lights.
Yeah, but it's not, it's not, but it's not connected to, it's not wired in. That was all.
Okay, so that's not it?
No, it doesn't sound like it.
Doesn't sound like it.
Didn't sound very clear.
Okay.
Okay, are we, are we back? Are we back? Bring us back.
We're back, we're back. We have audio.
Thank you, everyone, for your patience. At this time, Mrs. Kraus, has anyone sent in any questions or concerns under public comments?
Yes, we received two comments.
Are they addressed to the mayor?
Yes, they are.
I tell you what, for the record, can you please read the comment, the first one?
The first one is from Fernando, the mayor, can you please explain the petition date? The petition that this property is receiving. After all, the credit, how much money is the property going to be paying?
Mayor?
We did, we did, yes, go ahead. You want to talk, or you want Mr. Kuscha? Mr. Kuscha, go ahead.
The taxpayer will be paying exactly what he is supposed to be paying. The reason for the adjustment was because there was an error, as we spoke last time, in the calculation of his tax. It has been recalculated so that he pays the appropriate amount of tax. And since the tax bill is in quarterly payments, adjustments have to be made quarter.
Thank you, Mr. Kuscha. Mrs. Kraus, please read the second question.
Sure. Does, Mr. Mayor, do you have any news regarding the negotiation between the township and the owner? Feet above property with T. Redd, 75 Harrison Street.
Mayor, 75 Harrison Street, I gather that's the warehouse?
Sure. I can provide a brief update. We are in the process of, the planner's discussing the property owner, the potential for relocating some of the previous approved addition to ensure that it doesn't interfere with the flood tunnel. There is also some discussions with the engineer to ensure that the trucks will be able to make, have the area to make the great returning radiuses and forms of that sort. Because, of course, if this plan is going to happen, all of the, you know, everything needs to align to ensure that it will be possible. And so we are steadily moving forward with this process, you know, to eventually get this informed plans, informed submissions, and really, the planning board eventually correcting or undoing what had been approved. Really, starting back in 1963, again and again, in 15 years ago in 2005, and really working towards correcting the issues that have previously existed on this property. So I'm just hoping progress in this regard.
Thank you, Mr. Fernandez, for taking time out to ask your questions. I apologize to the residents for the, unfortunately, the terrible audio that we're experiencing. We'll have that rectified at our next meeting. I think we got that, the picture's really clear, but now we're having an audio issue. Can I have a motion to close to public comment?
So?
Moved by Councilmember Kawati, second.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Hablitz. Mrs. Kraus, oh, I'm sorry, we can do this by voice. All those in favor of closing to public comment signify by saying aye. All those opposed signify by saying nay. The motion carries. We're gonna move on to the consent agenda. Does anyone have any questions on the consent agenda? Have a motion to approve the consent agenda? Moved by Councilmember Van Cherry, second. Second by Councilmember Hablitz. Mrs. Kraus, this is a roll call. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Hablitz? Yes. Councilmember Kawati?
Yes.
Councilmember Seaver? Yes. Councilmember Van Cherry?
Yes.
Council President?
Yes.
Yes. There is one item on the agenda that I would just like to briefly touch upon. The resolution utilizing the changeover for a negative $50,457.81 contract on the Duva Field project. A resume was, there was a whole bunch of work that had initially been anticipated to be completed by the contractor. A good portion of it was the assembly of the bleachers and a couple of other items at the field. Discussions with our DPW, our business administrator and the council, we decided that it would be far more prudent to have our DPW assemble the bleachers and handle some of the other last-minute checklist items that were to be completed at Duva Field. So we were able to actually remove and access. So, we were able to actually remove an excess of $50,000 from the previous turf project that is now being handled internally by our DPW. So, I was very happy to be able to do that. Those reforms that had previously been anticipated and allocated to the project were now able to essentially capture the recovery.
Thank you, Mayor. It's always wonderful when you bring a good cost savings into the township, and also having our own individuals being able to benefit from it. Thank you. Before I ask Mrs. Kraus to read ordinance 1390, I do want to thank Mr. Kuscha at chief post and Council Wenzel. My, I think mantra is whenever we have to come up with an ordinance to benefit the residents of Little Falls, that we do expedite it as quickly as we can, but making sure it's done appropriately. This is a fine example of that, this came to light of circumstances that a part of town were having an issue, and that the staff and the mayor and the council moved on a rapid pace to bring something forward so that we can rectify that. So, at this time, Mrs. Kraus, can you read ordinance 1390?
Introduction of ordinance number 1390, and ordinance title, the ordinance of the township council of the township of Little Falls and the county of the state of New Jersey, meaning the township's headquarters, chapter 136, knowing with a secondary reading of public hearing scheduled for November 23rd, 2020.
Can I have a motion to introduce ordinance 1390? Moved by Councilmember Kawati, second by Councilmember Seaver. Mrs. Kraus, call the roll for 1390.
Councilmember Havlitz?
Councilmember Havlitz?
Yes.
Councilmember Kawati?
Councilmember Kawati? Yes.
Councilmember Seaver?
Councilmember Seaver?
Yes.
Councilmember Vanchery?
Councilmember Vanchery?
Yes.
Council President?
Yes, so at this time, Mayor, would you like to comment on this new, on this ordinance? I see you're switching on and off over there, so, okay. So, this ordinance came about because we do have a section of town, as I mentioned before, that was experiencing some loud music, and it came to the attention of the mayor and the council to try to rectify that. We met with the chief of police, chief post, we've talked to our council, Council Wenzel, and our administrator, Mr. Kuscha, in needing to find an ordinance that our enforcement, police department could enforce and provide a better quality of life to that section of town. And that's what this ordinance does. I don't know if the council has any questions about this ordinance, we can raise them at this point. Council members, do you have any questions? Mr. Wenzel, do you have any thoughts on this 1390? It has enough, I guess, should I say teeth in it to address what we brought to you, that's the concern?
In general, what this ordinance does, Council President, it gives our police department with code enforcement officials additional powers to ensure that the residents of the township enjoy the benefits of the township without intruding into each other's peace and good order. And the version that I have are prepared, that draft is one that I believe meets legal requirements, and our police department will be able, along with our code enforcement and other township employees that are so deputized to do so, will be able to enforce the ordinance and see it through so that it has the requisite, as you referred to it, Council President.
Thank you, Council Wenzel. We did receive an email from Mr. Fernandez saying the sound is horrible. Yes, sir, we know the sound is horrible, we'll work on that for the next meeting. I apologize again that the sound is not where it should be, but we will work on that and make sure that is corrected for our next meeting. At this time, can I have a motion to adjourn this meeting? Moved by Councilmember Seaver. Second by Councilman Vanchery. All those in favor of adjourning this meeting, please signify by saying aye. All those opposed signify by saying nay. This meeting is now closed.
Check in the microphone two. Check in the microphone three. Check in the microphone four. Check in the microphone five, Council Presidency. Check in the microphone seven. Very loud. Check in the microphone eight. Check in the witness microphone. Check in the microphone. It's not even called in. So, all right, now you can, you today, no, no, please go back and listen and see which one sounds ridiculous.